Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapeta. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning. Welcome to the May 1st, 2024 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sapeta?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning and we acknowledge you in all of our ways and we thank you for who you are. And this morning, we pray for our April retirees that are coming up in aging services Gerald Randolph. We pray for in cooperative extension Joanne Northrup and Public Utilities Bonita Bowers. We thank you for their special gifts and talents that you've given each one of them that they have used for these many years to be a blessing to the people of Hillsborough County. And now we ask you to bless them greatly and fulfill their hearts' desires and bless them in every area of their lives, including a long and healthy life. And we also pray this morning for peace throughout the university campuses. We pray for Hillsborough County, the state of Florida, and our nation. We pray for protection from all enemies. We pray for peace throughout our land. We pray for peace in Israel, peace in the Middle East, and peace in every nation. And we pray for protection over all the innocent people that have been affected by war. And we ask you to bless this meeting today in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapeta. The first item this morning is a very special award for both the Board of County Commissioners and the people of Hillsborough County. It is our pleasure to present the 2024 Ellsworth G. Simmons Good Government Award. The Board of County Commissioners established the Ellsworth G. Simmons Good Government Award in 1996 to honor an individual or group for the significant role they play in improving government through leadership and vision. The Ellsworth G. Simmons Good Government Award is named in honor of a respected government and civic leader who served seven years on the Hillsborough County School Board and 21 years on the Board of County Commissioners. Through Mr. Simmons' efforts and involvement in such initiatives as the University of South Florida, Tampa International Airport, and University Community Hospital, he helped transform Hillsborough County. Since the first Ellsworth G. Simmons Good Government Award was presented to late U.S. Representative Sam Givens in 1997, Hillsborough County has had the pleasure and honor to recognize the achievements and lives of 27 other individuals whose dedication to public service has strengthened the county's legacy. Other past winners include Florida Speaker of the House H. Lee Moffitt, Judge E.J. Salsinas, Governor Bob Martinez, and Hillsborough County Commissioner Jan K. Platt. Last year's recipient was Crisis Center of Tampa Bay CEO Clara Reynolds. First, I want to recognize the Simmons family and the other members of the award selection committee. We are very pleased that we continue to have a member of the Simmons family that we involved in this award. Michelle Henry, the late Commissioner's granddaughter, serves every year. We also thank the other committee members who made nominations and recommended the finalists. We appreciate your service. Some of them are here today. If you could please stand as I call out your names. They are my appointee Brenda Thrower, Committee Chair, Freddie Barton, Steve Emerson, Joe Gidry, Sheila Simmons Treble, and Mary Wood. Thank you all very much for serving on the committee again. And now I'd like to recognize Commissioner Myers, who will present this year's award.
Good morning and thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope I don't get nervous, but it's an honor to make this presentation on behalf of my favorite, favorite junior high school teacher. So that tells us we are both are young. I would like to recognize, hold on, I didn't want to get nervous, the individual who earned this award over the past 28 years has had profound positive impact on Hillsborough County. These leaders shaped this community in what it is today. I am very pleased to introduce this year's recipient, who was also my seventh, eighth, and ninth grade teacher, Doritah Nguyen Edgcombe. Let's show some love. Ms. Edgcombe, welcome. It is a pleasure to have you here this morning. Today, we are honored to recognize this amazing woman who lifelong served on behalf of the children, family, and educators of Hillsborough County, has left an immeasurable impact on the community. A native of Tampa, Doritah Edgcombe knew at a very young age that she wanted to be an educator with her eighth grade English teacher, Ms. Henry Fred, inspired her to be a teacher. Ms. Edgcombe's career choice was not a surprise. After all, there are four generations of educators in Ms. Edgcombe's family. After graduating from Middleton High School and earning her bachelor's in English at Talladega College in Alabama, she started her journey as an educator at Hillsborough County Public Schools in 1964. The beginning of her career that spanned over 50 years, she served in numerous capacities, including teacher, district-level supervisor, and principal. At the same time, she strove to learn more about her profession by earning a master's degree in reading education from the University of South Florida College of Education, and she earned certification in educational leadership. When she retired from the Hillsborough County Public Schools in 1996, she wasn't finished yet. In addition to serving as a trainer for the Educational Testing Service in schools around the state of Florida, Puerto Rico, and the U.S. Virgin Islands, Ms. Edgcombe was elected to the Hillsborough County School Board in 2004. She served distinction until 2016. She also has been an active member of several notable local organizations, including Tampa Metropolitan Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, the Advisory Board of Directors of the Hillsborough County Education Foundation, NOPE Incorporated, Hopak United Methodist Church, and the Athena Society, where she served as president in 2019. Her accolades are numerous and extraordinary. They include the USF's President Distinguished Citizen Award and Women in Leadership and Philanthropy 2019 Lifetime Achievement Award, Introduction into the Hillsborough County Women's Hall of Fame, the Tampa Metropolitan Area YMCA Community Impact Award, and Girl Scouts of West Central Florida Women's of Distinction Award. In 2020, she was named the Junior League Luminaria, and in 2021, the Children's Board of Hillsborough County honored her by naming one of the seven Family Resources Centers in her honor. The Doritah Nguyen Edgcombe Family Resources Center is the only center named after a member of the community. Additionally, the Doritah Edgcombe Female Symposium hosted by Hillsborough County Public Schools Education Prevention and Intervention Centers recently celebrated its ninth annual event. This symposium, which is named in her honor, is designed to empower, inspire, and encourage young women through a day of activities and interaction with successful women in the community. Her love for education is matched only by her love for her family. Her husband was the late George Edgcombe, the first African-American Assistant State Attorney in Tampa and head of the Felony Division, and the first African-American county judge in Hillsborough County. Sadly, he died of leukemia two years after his appointment at the age of 31. After her retirement, Ms. Edgcombe supported and participated in establishment of the George Edgcombe Society in her late husband's honor in partnership with the H. Lee Moffitt Cancer Center. In fact, Mr. Edgcombe and Mr. Moffitt were friends. The George Edgcombe Society is a cancer outreach program targeting African-American community, and it provides funding to researchers at the Moffitt to investigate and determine the type of cancer that most often African-Americans. The couple, lovely daughter Allison, who I see is here today for this celebration, is a middle school generalist at Hillsborough County Public Schools, carrying on the family tradition. I am sure she is immensely proud of her mother's accomplishments. Ms. Edgcombe, you have provided tremendous leadership to Hillsborough County and the state of Florida for decades. This honor further illustrates how significant your accomplishments have been. Your service to others is an example to us all. Anybody's the spirit of the Ellsworth G. Simmons Good Government Award. It is my privilege to recognize your achievement today. In addition to this trophy, your name has been added to the perpetuary plaque that has listed all Ellsworth G. Simmons Good Government Award winners. It is displayed outside of our boardroom here on the second floor of County Center. We are so grateful for your work. Congratulations. Yesterday, I validated it is posted, your name on the plaque. So at this time, we would love for Ms. Edgcombe to come forward to receive her trophy.
Can I get a hug first before the picture?
Sure. Okay. Congratulations. Let's step out front so that we can get a good picture.
Good morning, Commissioner Myers. I'm not sure how I can say that Gwen comes very natural for me since you're my favorite, 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 favorite student. This is an honor that I never expected in my lifetime. It feels magical, but magical is more appropriate for Disney World than magical in a boardroom, but that's how it feels this morning. Thank you so much for those wonderful remarks. I'm not surprised that you are where you are in this place in your life. I won't tell the year that you were my sixth, seventh, and eighth grade student, or whatever the numbers were, because that tells a little bit about me, and we aren't going to discuss that this morning. I'm so surprised by this honor. I am also very humbled and honored by it. And I thank you for making this such a wonderful day. The honor in itself is very special, but having you introduce me makes it even more special. I just want to tell you now I have a confession to make. From time to time, when I'm someplace and they are talking about you, I don't take all of the credit, but I quickly say you are my student. So I just want you to know. Good morning, Commissioners, members of the nominating committee, all of you staff, and all of you who have come here today. Thank you for taking the time to get up so early, and some of you are using this time to be late to work, but that's okay. I appreciate your presence this morning. Again, I am so proud of your leadership. You were a good student, and even then, I saw leadership qualities in you. I don't know how to begin this morning except to say this is a blessing. And every time that I have been in this position of receiving an award or being recognized, I call it a blessing, and today is no exception. It really is. To the nominating committee, thank you for thinking that my life's work is worthy of this award. I didn't know Mr. Simmons personally, but I do know we had something in common. We were public servants. He was on the school board. I was on the school board. And he served for many years in a very prestigious way, and he left a legacy in such a way that he has this award named in his honor. And Doritah Edgcombe Nguyen is going to have her name on the outside. Can you just think of that? Did I say Edgcombe Nguyen? Edgcombe. Nguyen Edgcombe. Okay. If I'm a little bit nervous, please forgive me. I never expected to be in this place making these remarks about a man and accepting this award. To all of you who are here, again, thank you for coming. Commissioners, I thank you for being the last point of having this approval, and I thank you for believing in the committee's recommendation that so I can stand here this morning and hope that my work in so many ways reflects the legacy and the prestigious award of Mr. Simmons. I know that he has given much to this county. He has given much to this county, and in some way, I hope my commitment, my dedication, and my lifelong work really reflects his legacy and his service. I really am so proud that so many of you have come, as I said, this morning, and I'd like to introduce to you to introduce at this time. But before I do that, I have to thank the members of the staff for being so generous and helping me through this process. I would not be here today without them. And so my words of gratitude for the staff. Now let me introduce you to my family and friends who are here today. You're making my daughter Allison. I'm going to just ask you to stand, and other members of my family. My niece Cherie, my cousin Charles. I don't think the others are here yet. Oh, my one niece Amber, who just walked in. My niece Angela. Okay. Thank you always for loving me and supporting me, no matter the circumstances. Many friends are here, but they have been so close and so supportive over time. They're more like family, and I thank you too for being there for me and with me. I really do appreciate how much you poured into my life and poured into this moment. You really have become more like family. And if you see a sea of red out there, members of my sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, members of the Tampa Metropolitan Alumni Association, that's our chapter, and Tampa Alumni Chapter, would you please stand? I didn't say I was going to ask you, but since you're there and all in your care. And forgive me, Saros, it is a nervous moment for me. Some of my church families are here, including the Reverend Sally Campbell Evans, who is the pastor of Congregational Care. Sally, and that's Sally, so stand up, and members of the Aitkins family who are here. Don't worry about standing, it's okay. Okay. Thank you. I think there's some members of the Tampa Bay Chapter Alumni Association for Talladega College, my college, and Charles's college, by the way. Interestingly, some of my, two of my supporters are former recipients of this award. The Honorable E.J. Salsinas, an honorary in 2000. Judge Salsinas, would you please stand? And the Honorable Arthenia Joyner, former state senator, who was a recipient in 2020. I hope I didn't miss anybody, because, did I? I thought I heard. Uh huh. Okay, I didn't hear that. All of you here today in some way have been part of my life, and I thank you so much for that. And I accept this honor in the memory of my parents, who instilled and modeled for my sisters to me the importance of giving, the importance of sacrifice, and the importance of service. And in some way, I hope I have lived up to their expectations. I know they are here today in spirit, and I hope that they are proud of how I have lived my life and the things that they taught us. Thank you so much again, Commissioners, for your support. Thank you for this blessing, and thank you all for this magical moment.
Now you know why she's still so special to me. I'm going to go to the back and take a picture.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to follow you. The student following the teacher.
I'd like to make a comment first. Thank you. I just would like to say that we are deeply honored to have you here, to honor you today. You have a wonderful legacy in education, your service on the board, but your years, and this is before we even knew that you were Commissioner Myers' sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teacher. But, and thank you for all your service in the past and all your service still in the present. It is amazing legacy that you've left to us. It's reflected, I think, in all the different people and groups that came here today with you to honor you, but also the legacy of the late George Edgcombe and how you promoted that in this community and made that known and left us with all that. So thank you for your examples. I'm sure your parents are very proud of your giving, your sacrifice, and your service.
Thank you, Commissioner. I do appreciate your comments. This is my honor. It really is.
I just also want to quickly express to you my hearty congratulations. This award really is, in my view, the most important award that the board gives. And when I saw that your name was the recipient this year, I just could not have been more excited and happy, not just for you, but for us, because our community has been so enriched by your service over the years. And the people that are in this audience today are really a testament to that. There's a lot of friends and colleagues and familiar faces here, and it's really wonderful that we can celebrate you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I really appreciate your comments.
Okay, Commissioner Myers, you going to present the next recognition? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Would Audrey Sullivan Moore, Chair of the Social Action Committee of the Tampa Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, please join me at the podium? I knew I had to put on my green this morning because I knew all the Delta girls, they were coming with red.
Yes, they were coming in red. The ladies in red.
Yes, the ladies in red. Good morning and thank you for joining us today. Now I would ask that the members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated please Thank you so much. You may be seated. This is one of my favorite times of the year. Each spring, the board presents a proclamation to Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated honoring its steadfast efforts and unwavering dedication to the community. Two alumni chapters, Tampa Alumni and the Tampa Metropolitan Alumni, along with two college chapters, Kappa Iota at the University of South Florida and TAOA at the University of Tampa, provide toilet service and support to our residents. They truly make a world of a difference in our community. For their efforts, I am proud to honor them and the entire sisterhood today with this proclamation. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is a private not-for-profit organization of college-educated women who purpose is to aid and support through established programs in local communities throughout the world and extensive array of public service initiatives delivered through its five-point programmatic thrusts. Since its founding in 1913, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated has clearly distinguished itself as an organization that bodily confront the challenges of African-Americans and hence all Americans. Membership consists of more than 350,000 women and 1,000 college and alumni chapters located in the United States, the Bahamas, Bermuda, United States of Arabia, Saudi Arabia, Kuwait, Oman, Bermuda, Canada, English, Germany, Jamaica, Japan, West Africa, South Africa, South Korea, and the Virgin Islands. And whereas Delta Sigma Theta's principal purposes are to engage in cultural, educational, and service activities to establish, maintain, and encourage cultural intellect and moral standards as a service organization. Its major programs are based on economic development, educational development, and international awareness and involvement, fiscally and mentally health, and political awareness and involvement. And whereas engaging in the social action is an integral part of the sorority's mission in addressing each component of the sorority's five-point programmatic thrusts that began by participating in Women's Suffrage March in 1913. We carry our mission forward throughout our distinguished, as a non-governmental organization, members of the United Nations, our National Social Action Commission, and D4 Women in Action. And whereas the two alumni chapters, Tampa Alumni Chartered in 1947 and the Tampa Metropolitan Alumni Chartered in 2003, along with two collegiate chapters, Kappa Iota at the University of South Florida Chartered in 1973, and TAOA at the University of Tampa Chartered in 2001, provide community service and support to the residents of Hillsborough County. They use their efforts to serve as a vehicle for advocacy that infects social change and public policy, supporting quality education, and granting scholarships to high school seniors, producing new projects to stimulate current and future economic growth, and improving the holistic well-being of minority populations locally, nationally, and globally. And whereas the Tampa Alumni Chapter, celebrating its 77th year, strives to be the leader in local and global communities by creating positive transgenerational local and global communities by creating positive transgenerational impacts through excellence, innovative programs, and dedicated service in social action. And whereas nobly, members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, our Dr. Paulette C. Walker, the 25th National President, former state senator Athena Joyner, the Senate Former Democrat Leader, the Honorable Frances Driscoll, Florida House of Representatives, Minority Leader in Florida House of Representative District 67, the Honorable Charlene Edwards-Honeywell, United States District Judge, Middle District of Florida, and Gwendolyn Henderson, Tampa City Council, District 5. And whereas, with the 35th Annual Delta Day as a national capital theme, far with fortitude, honoring our legacy, empowering through advocacy, the Social Action Committee of the Tampa Chapter are convening this 18th Annual Delta Day at the County Commission. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare May 1st, 2024 as the 18th Annual Delta Day in Hillsborough County and commend the Tampa Chapters of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated on their years of continued exemplary service to Hillsborough County and its citizens executed this first day of May, 2024. And here is the proclamation. Ms. Sullivan, where's my staff to take pictures? Thank you. Okay, so Ms. Sullivan, we would love for you to say a few words, please.
Good morning. So every year, we do receive this award, and I've been here doing this for a few years. I want to thank Commissioner Myers and all of the commissioners. Believe you me that we do not take this lightly. Even though we know this is an annual event, it does not stop us from stepping up our game. The support that you all have shown us this year and last year has enabled us to provide even more innovative and award-winning programming for and service to our community. So on behalf of our, my chapter president for the Tampa Alumni Chapter, Dr. Tiana Richardson, Deidre Henderson, the president for the Tampa Metropolitan Alumni Chapter, Ms. Jada Bates, Kappa Iota Chapter President, and a Tau Iota who is not represented today, we gratefully and humbly accept this proclamation and thank you for your service to our organization.
As a member of the Divine Nine and an AKA, we appreciate the services that all of the Divine Nine, but today is Delta Day. And so, to the Deltas, I appreciate what you all do in the community, because you all do so many great community service projects, and you invite me there, so I know what you're doing. And this is what our public need to see, how we serve our youth every day. You're always finding opportunities, whether you're giving scholarships or just providing educational training for our youth. We want them to grow up to be like us one day, so thank you so much. This is Delta Day, so if any Deltas want to join in the picture, we get first picture, come on up, my good Delta friends. We'll do one, sure. Okay, great to see you red and me green. Come on, speed up, I don't want Mr. Chair looking at me a little. Come on, tighten up. You wanna put this edge on?
And up here, and three, two, one. And one more. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for joining us. Again, thanks everyone for coming.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Myers, for presenting the last two very special recognitions. It's my honor to once again present a proclamation declaring May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. We have a number of distinguished guests with us here today, with Joey O'Milla, Mayor Ben Anderson of the Asian American and Pacific Islander-
Chair, Chair, hold on one second. If everybody could just be as quiet as you can when you leave, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Owen. But Mayor Ben Anderson, please come forward, as well as Hung Mai, event organizer, please join me at the podium.
Thank you, sir. You all ever know Mr. Hung Mai? He's my mentor, my idol, and a leader of the Asian community, so.
Well, he's also one of my mentors, so that's why we're gonna invite Hung to come up here and introduce the rest of our guests.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioner. County Administrator Bonnie Wise, County Attorney Kristen Back. My name is Hung Mai. On behalf of Asian community here in the chamber today, we thank you very much for the Board of County Commissioners recognize the month of May, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Representing today, Mr. Chairman and the Board, we got the Philippine Cultural Foundation, Mr. Joey O'Milla, which are here, Arnold Bicklet, see the Chairman of the Board, please coming up. When I, please, when I call your name, please coming up, if you don't mind. And if I'm missing anybody, please coming up too. Joycey Penton, also with the Philippine Cultural Center, representing the Mayor Tambar AAPI Advisory Council, Raco Pango with the City of Tambar Office of the Mayor, Donna McAllister, Mary Ben Anderson, Jenny Holcomb, Zara Ellis, Julie Zhou, and Ms. Andrew, representing the Hmong community of Tampa Bay, Peter and Linda Yang, representing the Sun Coast Association of Chinese-American, the President, Mr. Min Lee, Min He, representing the President of the Chinese Chamber of Commerce of Tampa Bay, Ms. Sunny Duane, representing the Thai community, NP, Ms. Gasparilla Lai Thai Queen, please coming up, representing the Japanese community, Mr. Wen Maori, representing the Korean community, Mr. David Shin, President of Korea Association of the West, Florida, representing the Vietnamese community, Dr. Than Mi, Mr. Ken Tran, Ms. Ngali, and Ms. Anne Trung, she representing the DAC representative. If, if I'm missing anyone in the Asian community, please coming up. Oh, we got the Florida, uh, compete, she gonna, she gonna compete with the, um-
National.
National, Miss, Miss America. And we missing today is a Colonel, retired US Army, DJ Ray. He couldn't be here today. He up in Jacksonville to take care, you know, his, uh, it work. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I give it back to you.
Thank you very much, Hung, and welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. The Asian Pacific American Heritage Month was first established by the United States Congress in 1978 to honor the contributions of Asian Pacific Americans to the sciences, arts, industry, government, and commerce. It originally encompassed the first 10 days of May, but 1992, Congress extended the observance to include the entire month. Hillsborough County is enriched by the large population of Asian Pacific Americans whose origins include Cambodia, China, India, Indonesia, Japan, North and South Korea, Philippines, Singapore, Thailand, and Vietnam. Their impacts are widespread and significant. I am honored to celebrate these people and their diverse cultures with this proclamation that reads, "Whereas Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander American communities possess deep roots in the United States, the State of Florida, and Hillsborough County. And whereas Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander Americans contribute to the county's vibrant diversity, greatly expanding the region's prosperity and enriching residents' lives every day by sharing ideas, customs, and wisdoms. And whereas Asian Pacific American Heritage Month is observed during May to recognize the valuable influences Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander Americans have made in all areas of life, including government, business, arts and sciences, medicine, education, and law enforcement. And whereas Hillsborough County wishes to bring attention to and condemn Chinese Communist Party infiltration and influence directed at the Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander American communities, while also making space to create joy, healing, education, and celebrations for the richness of their cultures. And whereas Asian Pacific American Heritage Month's theme is Stop CCP Socialism Attempt, Awareness, Solidarity, Community, and Celebration, and Hillsborough County is committed to providing comprehensive support that is equitable and welcoming to all people. And whereas Hillsborough County is proud to celebrate Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and commemorate the essential contributions, advocacy, and sacrifices made by all Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander Americans. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough, Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare May 2024 as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in Hillsborough County and recognizes all residents to recognize the achievements by Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander Americans, further demonstrating the importance of cultural diversity and unity, executed this first day of May, 2024." It's my pleasure to invite Ms. Anderson, please come forward and say a few words.
Well, esteemed commissioners, Hillsborough County, and my fellow Asian American Pacific Islanders, it's an honor to be here to accept this proclamation. Thank you so much. We are a much richer multicultural county because of all the people, of all races, that live in our community, and we would like to invite you to join us on May 11, from 12 noon till 9:00 PM, for the City of Tampa Mayor's AAPI Advisory Council's Asian Pacific Cultural Festival. We have over 16 countries represented. There will be great food. We have 21 food vendors, 75 overall, unique gifts, just in time for Mother's Day, you wanna go shopping. And we have cultural representations and the very, very first Miss Asia-Pacific Scholarship Pageant, and the Miss, and the Asia-Pacific Singing Idol, and that will be emceed by our local, uh, celebrities, Miguel Octavia from Channel 10 and Kimberly Quezon from Channel 13. And of course, we have our supporters, a retired general, I'm sorry, Colonel, and Senator Collins, councilman. And of course, we would love to have the commissioners over there, so we can announce you. And as part of the drive, the Hillsborough County are going to have a boot to register Asian voters, so please, please, join us to celebrate this month and celebrate Asian Pacific Islander culture.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Member of the Board. We are so proud to be thankful for your commitment to keep Hillsborough County the diversity place and recognize all the different culture, to weave us into the fabric of the place we call home, is a second homeland. Our principle is promote and continue with our culture, value of family tradition, provide opportunity to our children to become a productive citizen in the US, working hard for ourselves with the ability to give back to the society who nurtured us, and we will stand up if necessary to protect our family, stand for freedom and democracy, and again, any evil of communism. Mr. Chairman, with the, and Member of the Board, with your permission, I'd like to interview Dr. Mi, she representing the Vietnamese community, she can have a few words. I promise you not gonna be more than three minutes, by the book.
Thank you, Mr. Hung Mai. Good morning, Commissioner Chair, Mr. Ken Hagan, and Hillsborough County Board of Permissioner. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Dr. Tammy Nguyen, and I'm the VP of the Vietnamese community of the Tampa Bay area, as well as the State of Florida. I am honored and proud to be here today with all of you to be presented a proclamation for Asian American Pacific Heritage Month. We are grateful to our Hillsborough County Commissioners, especially Mr. Ken Hagan, Chairman. Like millions of other immigrants who left their homeland to migrate to America, the Vietnamese-American community migrated to the United States, escaping communism in 1975, after that fateful day of April 30th, 1975, with the downfall of Saigon and South Vietnam. We were so fortunate to have America welcome us with their open arms and helped us realize a new life of freedom and democracy, as well as realize our share of the American dream for all, with, of course, hard work and determination. As we celebrate the American, American Heritage Month today, we honor all those who have dedicated their lives to making our American dream possible. We are grateful to those who serve and to those who sacrifice their lives to protect us and give us the freedom and the peaceful daily lives that we enjoy so much in this great nation. Thank you, America, and God bless.
All right, if we can all back up, we'll take a, we'll take a photo. All right, if we can all back up, we'll take a photo. All right. Bonnie, want to review the changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Well, first off, the item agenda was the proclamation we just heard by Commissioner Ken Hagan on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners declaring May 2024 as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in Hillsborough County. We have two items that have been deferred to May 15. First one is Item A18. This is to approve the fiscal year '24 budget and 2023 non-advalorm assessment rate for a parcel for the Tampa Shores Special Dependent District. The second item is A37. This is to approve the First Amendment to Cooperative Funding Agreement between the County and Southwest Florida Management District and Hillsborough County Resources Department for the North Hillsborough Aqua for Recharge Program Phase II Project. And the only item we have for a time certain is 1145 Recess for Lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Changes.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Cohen, Senator Myers, please accord your vote on the changes to the agenda.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We're going to the public comment portion of the agenda. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to Board members. However, at the same time, as requested, when you address the Board, the comments are not directed personally at a Commissioner or a staff, but rather the issues. The Board has set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. The Chair will call on speakers by name in order in which the requests to speak have been received. When addressing the Board, please state your name. And keep clearly at the microphone. Each person will be given three minutes. The first three Speakers this morning are David Coleman, followed by Denise Herndon, and then Wanda Broughton.
Hey, my name is Dave Coleman, and I was going to talk about something completely different three days ago, and then last night I attended a forum, community town hall, and I was going to speak on ongoing issues in the county that don't seem to be resolved. But there were many tables at that meeting by staff from groups throughout the county that are working really hard to resolve some of those issues. And sad thing is, is that we keep facing homelessness, just difficult issues in our community again and again. And I don't know how much the Board is actually working with all the staff and all the different groups to try and resolve and come up with real answers. What I'm going to talk about is what happened yesterday to friends of mine in Hillsborough County. I have been an activist, and I was at an event where 10 Democrats stood outside of a Biden event at HCC. And MAGA people, 100 of them draped flags over my head, pushed me, screamed in my face, while police sat across the street and watched. That was a few years ago. So there are different responses to different things. Yesterday, my friends were gassed, chased, dropped to the ground, assaulted, arrested. If you've got a military background, you might know something about kettling. The hundreds of officers could have easily surrounded them and then one at a time brought them out and arrested them because they were all there to be arrested. Every protest that I go to, I'm prepared that I'm going to get arrested. It's called a peaceful protest, and I'm ready, I'm available to be peacefully arrested. I've assigned myself that role. And so did the 50 students and outside supporters that were there yesterday. One had a gun. I think that probably more than half of you probably put a gun in your purse or your belt loop every day. It's part of what you do. So that's not really an issue. And those boards that they were holding, they were holding them because the day before, when the campus police came at them, they were stomped on. So it was more like a defensive thing, like, please don't stomp on me when you come in to arrest. And that day, it was three people. Yesterday, it was 10. I would like the Board to send a strong message to the Hillsborough County Police Department that we don't do this kind of stuff in Hillsborough County. My time's about to run out, but somebody had given me this when I went to a recent rally, young Muslim woman. And the doctor had said, "Freedom and justice for all" was the welcoming.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Denise Herndon, followed by Wanda Broughton. Denise, are you here? Nope. Okay, Ms. Wanda, are you here?
Yep.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I would like to speak on a later agenda item, Item F1. It was requested by Commissioner Lustel. This is a resolution by the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners declaring fentanyl a local public health crisis. Approving this resolution today would also declare that June 6 be recognized as Fentanyl Prevention and Awareness Day in Hillsborough County. I'm here to support, and I applaud this resolution because Hillsborough County was fourth in the state in 2022 with the highest number of fentanyl deaths. Our state attorney's office has been warning about the rise in the fentanyl-related death cases here in Hillsborough County. Please approve this resolution and show that you recognize fentanyl has a devastating effect on families like mine. You'll be standing with the residents and families declaring fentanyl is a serious public safety threat. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comment. Richard Rogers, and followed by Josie Ficki. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I'm Richard Rogers with Habitat for Humanity of Hillsborough County, and I serve on the county's Affordable Housing Advisory Board. I would like to discuss a very recent issue that, if not revisited, will negatively impact affordable housing providers. Recently, the Commission rescinded impact fee relief for affordable housing developers. At a time when affordable housing is in a crisis, we're being asked by others, why now? The cost to build a Habitat home has increased 30% in the past two years, and we've seen increased homeowners' insurance costs and property taxes raise. Since the Federal Reserve began its rate hikes in 2022, the benchmark interest rate has risen five percentage points, while land costs have skyrocketed. All of these factors are creating challenges in the affordable housing sector at a time when wages of our homeowner applicants are not keeping pace. This is causing homeownership to be out of reach for far too many hardworking families in Hillsborough County. Owning a home is the number-one driver of economic mobility for individuals. However, in Hillsborough County, the working class is unable to afford to buy homes, which contributes to cyclical poverty. Some believe that developers should bear these costs because impact fee relief is not going directly to the home buyer. But home sales work the same as any purchase of any other product. When the price to make a product goes up, the sales price increases to cover the cost. What this translates to in affordable housing is that the income levels of those individuals that can be served must increase in order to keep providing homes. Though our focus will still be on low-income families, there will be some families that agencies cannot serve because they have to cover the costs to ensure that they continue to provide affordable homeownership opportunities. It has been said that it isn't right to use property taxes to support affordable housing options. But this wouldn't be a handout. It's an investment that will bring back a significant ROI. This opportunity provides affordable housing to our workforce, who keep our economy strong. Often, these low-income families would otherwise need subsidized rent, year after year. Instead, they become homeowners and taxpayers who pay forward much more in taxes than Habitat receives through impact fee relief. We're developing a project in Brandon where 23 low-income families will be provided with an affordable mortgage. The relief that was anticipated for each of these families through the Impact Fee Relief Program is less than $9,000. Habitat families that are gaining access to these homes will pay around $3,000 a year in property taxes. So in less than three years, the investment will be returned. And after 30 years, each family will have paid more than $90,000, or 10 times the amount invested in taxes. This is a high return on investment, while also helping to provide affordable housing for low-income families, who will help sustain our workforce and keep our economy strong. Habitat Hillsborough urges the Commission to reconsider the vote to rescind impact fee relief. If not for all affordable housing developers, then at least consider providing it for the 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations that provide affordable homeownership options.
Thank you, sir. You have Josie Ficki, and then I believe Denise Herndon came in the room. Is Ms. Ficki here? Okay, Ms. Herndon.
Good morning. I'm Denise Herndon. I've been a resident in Hillsborough County for, since '92, a homeowner since '95. And I'm concerned with some issues at my house. I've spoken to a Commissioner concerning it, and I know it's not going to get solved quickly. But it's this hump that they have put over my driveway, which is a utility easement. At first, it was just my dog because she bolts and goes after animals. She has even injured my arm, to the point of tearing a muscle in my arm from going after animals. But the other day, I used this cart to travel with because of this brain injury that I have. And I had a heavy load of groceries, and I almost fell over this hump with my groceries, not just my dog. My dog wasn't even with me. So I don't understand why Hillsborough County is putting these humps over people's driveways. If an individual, my neighbor has been in his home over 40 years, and he has many times had this hump put over his driveway. But when they repaved my road in 2020, they put this over my driveway, which is a utility easement. Someone told me that it was because it's a utility easement, someone had to ask Public Works to put this over my driveway. And actually, this man, because the grade of the road changed with paving it, he doesn't get any water, except now because of that hump over my driveway. It used to divert all the way to the utility easement, and I diverted it to both sides of my house with dirt in the utility easement. Now, the majority of that water goes into his property. No place else does he get water from the stormwater. And I have video of this. But this is a concern of mine because of my brain injury and what I do have to carry with me, that I'm going to be injured going over this hump over my driveway. I'm a persistent little piss. God made me a persistent little piss. And I'm not going to give up until this is resolved. I was thankful this morning when I saw a bench at one of the bus stops that was removed because of homeless people. I've seen signs at other bus stops that, no trespassing. This is for the people using the bus systems. And that's what needs to be done, not removing seats for us bus takers. So thank you for returning that seat. And we need to work on having more. I wish I had known about the survey about the buses. But thank you very much, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon. Bonnie, can we see if anyone can assist her?
Yeah, I think Ms. Herndon was referencing me. You came to my office hours, correct, Ms. Herndon? Was that you? Oh, she came to yours, okay. All right, okay.
We have staff that's already listening.
All right, thank you. Last person signed up this morning is Brooke Ward, who's virtual. Ms. Ward, are you on the phone?
Good morning. My name is Brooke Ward. I'm the Senior Florida Organizer with Pudin Water Watch. Very blessed to have you give us this opportunity to speak to you. This morning, though, I'm speaking on behalf of our entire coalition, the Hillsborough Affordable Energy Coalition, with a simple ask. Help Hillsborough families fight the new TECO rate hike. Every time we come to speak, more people in the community end up reaching out to us, sharing their struggles, and wanting to be part of our coalition. Just last month, we had two new community groups and over 150 new individual residents join our effort. This body proves how important your voice is when you sent a letter to the Public Service Commission last year asking for in-district hearing. And now, after 10 years without an in-district hearing, there will be one this June. But you can use your voice to do so much more. On April 2, Tampa Electric filed a new rate case to increase rates by about $20 to $30 a month, or hundreds of dollars more per year over the next three years. TECO rates have gone up at twice the rate of inflation and twice the rate of typical utility increases. The Hillsborough County Commission, you, represent 84% of Tampa Electric's customer base, meaning you have a stake and a legitimate interest in this case. We have gone to the Public Service Commission and asked for help. Our coalition has attorneys at the Public Service Commission fighting these rate cases. And they keep telling us one thing over and over again, is that the best thing we can do is ask Hillsborough County to intervene in the rate case. It's as simple as sending a letter to the PSC, but can make a much larger impact. You've often wiped your hands clean and said, "There's nothing we can do." But this is something substantial, impactful, and simple that you most definitely can do. And Hillsborough County has done this in the past. As a clear stakeholder in this fight, Hillsborough County families can support you. Help us fight skyrocketing rates and represent us in this rate case. Please intervene immediately in Tampa Electric's rate increase case. It is open docket number 26 of the dockets this year. Hearings will be held in August. You can just send an email to the clerk. It's that simple to file. We need your help. We know you want to help. Please help and intervene. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. Can we have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Cohen, Senator Myers, please accord your vote on the consent agenda. Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote on the consent agenda.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Bonnie, you want to do the first item?
First item is Item B1. This is to adopt a resolution from the Housing Finance Authority, and Mary Helen Ferris from the County Attorney's Office will present this item.
Good morning.
Thank you. Mary Helen Ferris, for the record. This item is to request that the Board adopt a resolution approving the issuance by the Housing Finance Authority of mortgage revenue bonds in a face amount not to exceed $34 million for the financing of a new project, new construction, located at 5709 North 47th Street in Tampa. There will be 175 rental units, and no county funds are being involved with this. It's state funding and HFA bonds. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments?
Moved to approve.
Motion approved. Commissioner Kemp, second. Commissioner Myers, no comments. Please accord your vote on B1.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Helen.
Thank you. The next item is Item B2. This is to approve an agreement regarding the Tampa Bay Workforce Alliance, and Ron Barton will present this item. Mr. Barton's also going to give an update on the status of the Career Source merger, and some of the commissioners are involved very much so, but others have not been. And so Ron will present that part of the presentation first.
Good morning, Ron.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator. As Ms. Wise mentioned, I'd like to just take a few minutes, give you an update on the efforts to consolidate and effectuate a merger of the two Career Source entities. You may recall or reported back to you, I'd say, late summer of last year, giving you an update that it was going to be a requirement from the state, that several regions around the state were required to consolidate, and we were one of them. And so, request that Pinellas and Hillsborough both consolidate their workforce board, but also effectuate a merger of the two Career Source entities. You notice I kind of picked two different things, because they're important to understand. And so, part of the effort was a consolidation of the workforce board, which the Board of County Commissions also affects that effort. So, back in October and November, we worked with the staff of Pinellas County, a good working relationship with them throughout. And we drafted an interlocal agreement that basically created the Hillsborough-Pinellas Workforce Development Consortium. We usually just say consortium. And that basically is comprised of two commissioners from Hillsborough County and two commissioners from Pinellas. As you may recall, Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Wostel are our two representatives on the consortium. So that first meeting of that consortium was early December, and in fact, they've had three meetings already, working through the various issues associated with the consolidation and the merger. Paramount of those efforts for the consortium were adopting, besides creating themselves as a consortium, was adopting bylaws for the new local workforce board, and also appointing members to that new workforce board. Very quickly, it was basically created with 50/50. You're going to laugh at me, but it's a 50/50 representation with 35 members. Think about that a second. And the way we did that is, we have one individual that's appointed that works in Botec, and he represents both counties. So we had a bi-county representative, and then 17 each, in board members. And so, that has been created as well. And so, lots of work has gone into that. By the way, your Commissioner Myers is the chair of that consortium, and Commissioner Wostel is a part of the interview committee that'll be looking at the finalists of the CEO positions. The other thing that I wanted to mention, the other thing I wanted to mention is that we also are bringing two Career Source agencies together. So it's not just the work of the counties and their effort, but it's also the merger of these two entities into one entity. And I'm here to say that they're well on their way to that. We're still holding ourselves, the entire team, to the goal of effectuating that merger by June 30, not very far away. And, but everyone's done great work, from the Career Source staffs at each of the entities, to our working relationship with Pinellas County staff, and your two board members, Commissioner Wostel and Commissioner Myers, leaning in on a lot of heavy work. So I wanted to give you that update, just so you know. And one of the things that you have before you with B2 is frankly what we call the basic blocking and tackling. This is something that is required every two years by the Department of Labor and the State of Florida, which is for the counties to designate those entities. In this case, you noticed a slightly different name: Hillsborough-Pinellas Career Source. And so, that's the entity, DPA, that we'll be using with the new merger. But the state wanted both BOCCs to approve this designation, and that's the item that you have before you.
All right, thanks, Ron. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I just have a question, because I didn't realize. So it's equal representation by each of the counties, 17 each, even though we have 1.5 billion people, and there's 1 million there. Is that by state law?
It is not. It's by a choice of your staff, working with their staff. We made every effort to enter this in an equal partnership. We want to establish trust. We want to establish a partnership, and we didn't think that that would be a good start for us to insist that our board members were going to be more in composition than the other. So we made that judgment call, and we had it endorsed by our consortium members.
Okay. I wanted to clarify that. I mean, and I'll thank the staff, because, you know, there's been a decade of incredible dysfunction, as we know, you know, and we're still facing federal government fines for what occurred at Career Source. It finally was, you know, functioning well and accountably and responsibly for a couple of years, when the state forced, again, a merger. And I feel like it's a structurally dysfunctional model, actually, in my mind, the way that it is with all those sprawling members and, you know, which I know has been somewhat what it's also with the federal designations. I always think that there should be representation by population, actually. So that's a little disappointing to me, but that's what it is. But I want to thank you for, I think, you know, just working to do what has been done. I know it's been a super, super heavy lift in the members here, and I know our staff has been very involved in trying to make it accountable and responsible, because it's really important to our communities, dealing with our workforce and employment. So thank you for that. And with that, I will make a motion to approve. But just with my disappointment that the state went down this direction after we finally had a really strong accountable organization, and then to have to redo this, but thank you for that. And again, a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Commissioner Kemp, there was a second?
Second.
And Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Cohen, your next in queue.
Commissioner Wostel, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you're on the search committee side. Just wanted to ask you, how far along is it? And is it, if maybe you could just tell us how it's going?
They had a pre-selection committee that vetted out our top three candidates. We have a six-hour scheduled interview on the second tomorrow.
With all three?
From 12 to 6 p.m. We will cover all three, and then afterwards, we will be making the selection, I believe, immediately afterwards, right, Mr. Barton?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so it's pretty far along.
Internal, external? What is the, do you remember the makeup?
There's one internal from Pinellas, which I was very clear that I was against from the start, and then there's two external, from the international search.
Got it. Thank you.
And Commissioner Kemp, if it makes you feel better, I did ask on day one, because one of the state reps that was in charge of making this happen is on our consortium, and I asked directly, can I, like, understand why? And I basically didn't get an answer as to what the benefit was expected to be from this merger. But it is what it is, and we'll make sure that we pick an extremely qualified CEO tomorrow that doesn't leave people that are searching for jobs behind. And staff has done a good job. I asked them about, is there worry about retention or in the ranks? And they've made sure that they've put messaging forward that does not promote people's fear to start jumping ship. So, you know, we are where we are, and you can all rest assured that I will ask my always number one, most important question of any executive interview search, which is, are you willing to fire people? Because if you're not, then you shouldn't be in the job. So we'll have a good result tomorrow.
All right, so we've got a motion, a second. No other comments. Please accord your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you. The next two items are Commissioner Wostel's item. Your first one is Item F1, regarding declaring fentanyl a local public health crisis.
Commissioner Wostel?
I don't know how much bartering or whipping of the votes I need to do for this, but I'll just remind everybody that just six months ago, Sheriff Judd, Sheriff Cronister...
Mike.
Going on and off, sorry. The state's attorney, Ashley Moody, our district attorney, Susie Lopez, all gathered and arrested three drug traffickers that they tracked from deep in Central America, through the border of California, all the way to Polk County. It was two illegals from Central and South America that lived in Wyomama illegally, one legally residing, I believe, in Riverview just north of them. This is not some hyperbolic Fox News issue. This is a real issue. This is people trafficking in on that arrest, enough fentanyl to kill 5 million people. That's more than three times the population of Hillsborough County. It's a serious issue that we have to start taking more serious and take real action on to start protecting. These people are not from here. They do not care about our way of life. They are bringing in, basically, a weapon of mass destruction. These are not debating if we can smoke weed from 1950. This is synthetic opioids that will kill you just from touching your skin. It's an extremely serious issue, and I look forward to all of your support on this motion, which we will be presenting on June 5.
Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, and I just want to thank you, Commissioner Wostel, for your leadership on this. For some reason, it seems to hit my district pretty hard, this issue. I also want to thank Wanda for coming down up here. Takes a lot of courage to come up here and be a part of this, Wanda, so I want to brag about her, because she lives in my district as well. But again, I just wanted to thank you for your leadership, and you're right, I'll echo what you said with our sheriff, our state attorney. These are not easy cases to prosecute. They're very difficult because of the drugs transferring from hand to hand to hand, and an actual mens rea, having knowledge of what they're providing and poisoning people with. So appreciate you, Commissioner Wostel, for your leadership on this. Thanks.
Commissioner Cohen?
And I just want to reiterate, this is an area that should have total bipartisan support. This is a very, very serious public health issue, and I agree with Commissioner Owen. Thank you, Commissioner Wostel, for bringing it up.
All right, so we've got a motion by Commissioner Wostel, there was a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Owen. Owen, no other comments. Please accord your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, Bonnie.
And the next item is Commissioner Wostel's as well, and this is regarding Item F2, previously adopted on March 6, 2024.
All right, Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you. I'm hopeful that this is something that also gets bipartisan support. I mean, we've said over and over how much we support veterans, and we're putting forward a committee that is there and should have the least amount of politics and politicians involved in letting them do the good work for veterans in this community. And we were sold that if we reduced the six-year requirement, which I was a fan of personally, anybody four years and under, they didn't really have any real leadership experience in the military. You just don't get it. Even as if you're a commissioned officer in four years, you're usually just considered some JO, that no one's really respecting their opinion at that point. They're just so green, much less if you were enlisted. The result was a worsened effect. It did not bring that lower, younger crowd that we were expecting. And this option, this motion, brings it back up to the staff recommended previously, which I agreed with, six years. I removed it down, thinking it might help. It didn't. But it does add a waiver for that if we get anybody 25 years or younger in there, then they will still be able to be waived, and we can still have the option for the younger crowd to get in there and be waived from the six-year requirement. And making sure that we're getting highly qualified military professionals that had military leadership experience, that can make decisions on this valuable veterans board, that can bring value to, I believe it's 12% of the population of Hillsborough County, is represented by active-duty and veterans. So I hope that this will bring some closure to this resolution, so that we can start getting this board in place and move on with the plans that we're going for. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like for it to stay the same as we voted on March 6, because we do have veterans who have served during peacetime and wartime, and presented their leadership, and has returned home, and still want to serve on this advisory, new advisory board of the county. So having four years, even if an individual who has been honorably discharged and has a leadership experience, can qualify to serve on this board. Having six years, we have the opportunity to eliminate veterans who have served our country, and now is back home and want to serve on our board. So I would like to have the support of this board, that we keep it at four years, to allow them the opportunity to serve our county on a new board for veterans. Because in military, it's only 90 days that you can have in serving in the military that you are consumed as a veteran. You're considered as a veteran.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I don't really understand why you would reduce, or why you would increase from four years to six years. I mean, there's people with four years of service who are great leaders, people with more. But if you're in the military for one year, you can lose your life. You wouldn't be here. You can be severely injured and have difficulty. You're willing to sacrifice, whether it be four years of service or six. Commissioner Sepeda, did you do four years of service?
I don't know why you're asking personal questions here right now.
Okay. I just wondered, I just wondered, sorry. And it just seems to me that, you know, to me, it's kind of disturbing to say that someone who had four years of service to our country could not be part of this leadership because they don't have the leadership skills. But I also find it disturbing that there's an exception for people under 25, to tell you the truth, because why, you know, why would that be an exception there? They have enough leadership to be on it, but someone who's 26 or 27, who served four years, would not. So I'll just support the original one. And again, I'm sorry for asking that question. I didn't mean to upset you. But, you know, I just think that four years of service is adequate and provides for the biggest pool of people, and there's plenty of leadership in those who have dedicated four years to our country.
Okay, before we go back around again on the queue, I'm just going to tell you where I'm at here. I have the utmost respect for anyone who served in our armed forces, and I thank Commissioner Wostel and Cameron Sepeda for their service. Since I did not serve, I'm reluctant to weigh in.
Since I did not serve, I'm reluctant to weigh in on what's the minimum years of service, what that should be. And I'm inclined to defer to those who have served, and everything Commissioner Wostel said makes perfect sense. However, what I do know is, I received a call this week from, you know, a good man, my good friend, Commissioner Wes Miller, who served in the armed forces, wants to continue serving in a different capacity on this board. And I don't understand all the specifics, but he's, my understanding is, he's unable to serve if the requirement is six years. So what I'm going to suggest or ask, and we'll see if Commissioner Owen or Wostel's amenable to it, is, and I'm comfortable with six years, but if we could extend the eligibility to include any previously elected official who's been honorably discharged and served fewer than six years. So I'm not going to support anything that would prevent, you know, my friend from being able to serve, but I'm more than happy to support six years. So that's where I am, and we'll see where everything goes.
Commissioner Wostel?
Yeah, I don't think that I need to remind either of you that I don't need a lecture about military service, and I don't need to hear a lecture about the potential dangers of how long you're in service, particularly somebody who deployed actively to Afghanistan. Thank you very much. And yes, I don't believe that it's appropriate for former elected officials to continue to weigh in on local boards and committees and impose their will. I don't believe that it's fair to staff, who we allegedly want to support and agree with their decisions, unless we come to a point where it no longer supports our initiatives. I don't believe that it's fair to them when you have a board of council of other veterans who were not former elected officials, and then staff has to deal with the fact that there is one that may or may not have direct access to the current elect officials and complain if they're not getting their way. So I believe that this is something that would be an impediment to something that's supposed to be working towards supporting veterans in the communities. So no, I don't believe that it's appropriate that former elected officials continue to be involved in Hillsborough County business under the radar.
Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I too am someone who's just a direct beneficiary of the freedom and the sacrifices that others make, others make, so I too defer to you two here on this board. You know, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Commissioner Wostel. I don't think you were saying anything about people having leadership skills. I think this is more just about experience, correct? You could serve for one day, you know, as Commissioner Kemp alluded to. There's nothing to do. I don't think Commissioner Wostel mentioned anything to do with leadership qualities, but this more has to do with experience. So I'm going to probably always, 100% of the time, defer to the two commissioners that have actually served, so I will second the motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
I'd like to make a substitute motion. I move that an applicant have a minimum of four years to serve on the county's Veteran Advisory Board.
Second.
Point of order, isn't, is that the current, is the substitute motion the what's currently in place? It's not, okay, I just want a clarification.
It is, or it is not?
It is. Well, then it wouldn't have...
Is that from a procedural standpoint?
So my understanding is that that's what already exists, and Commissioner Wostel was suggesting to change it to six. So I think if the motion fails, then it just stays as is.
Okay.
Right.
Sorry, Christine, are you good with that? Okay.
Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
Yes, I support Commissioner Wostel. I believe that the more, because the point is here is a Veterans Advisory Board, so the more experienced as a veteran on an advisory board, I believe, is best. So that's why I would like to stay with the six, the six years, as Commissioner Wostel mentioned.
Okay. Again, I'm not going to support the motion for the reasons I identified. If it fails, I'm more than happy to entertain a motion for six years, but includes the eligibility to anyone who previously served less than six years. So we have a motion.
Is this the original motion?
Yes.
That's before us?
Yes, we have a original motion. Commissioner Wostel, second Commissioner Owen, please record your vote.
Motion failed, three to four. Commissioners Cohen, Higgins, Kemp, and Myers voted no.
Okay. Next item?
So sorry. The last item or future discussion items?
Anyone have a future issue? Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each year, staff prepares for board consideration and annual submission to the TPO's priority project list for the Transportation Improvement Program, better known as the TIP. This year, the board adopted its priority list on February 21st. At the next meeting on March 6, the board directed that a letter be sent to the TPO identifying new priorities for the TIP to address the anticipated expansion of the urban service area in my district. Staff sent that letter to the TPO on March 28. So I want to prefix by stating, there hasn't been any real action taken by the TPO, but we did have a board meeting concerning the correspondence of this board directed to them. And it met with overwhelming discouragement and, I don't want to say animosity, but as if the correspondence was going to be ignored. Again, I am going to bring an item specifically to the TPO on this, but I think it's important to note that the TPO has members on there that are not elected officials. They occupy the taxpayers' building. They actually use our staff as well, so, for example, attorneys. And I know what happens contractually if the TPO board conflicts with this board's recommendations. That creates what's called a conflict. So I'm, while I'm not speaking for the Florida bar, I'm pretty confident on what their answer would be is if they're, if they denied basically the subject matter of our correspondence. So I'm requesting, my request today is that staff work with me to advise how the board can amend its approved priority list to add the changes adopted by the board on March 6 and identified in staff's March 28 letter to the TPO. Also, I would also direct staff to provide me with any contracts that the TPO presently has for staffing services. That's it.
Bonnie, you understand that? All right. Any other future issues? Okay, we're adjourned.